Good evening and welcome to the January 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both remote and in person. And I'll give you a few points on that in just a moment. Please also note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. Also, if anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify us. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're connected remotely. I don't see that anyone is. So pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it's in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and the conference ID is 138-132-979. Or you may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda that's posted on the town website. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Chatham 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So let's start with a roll call of the board. We have two members also who are joining us remotely. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
And Charlene Greenhoutch.
Charlene Greenhoutch, present.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. And may I also ask, are there any board members who need to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda? All right, thank you. So let's start with our minutes from January 8th, 2024. Anyone have any corrections, additions, changes? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
I move, except the minutes as drafted.
Thank you. May I have a second?
We need you, Charlene.
Second.
Charlene, okay. Okay, let's do a vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Charlene Greenhoutch.
Charlene Greenhoutch, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve the minutes for January 8th. First, next item on our agenda is a site plan review, an amended site plan for 251 Kroll Road. And this is for a change of use, an amended site plan for the Three Finns Coffee Roasters. And this is a proposed change of use from health club to restaurant and coffee shop. Do I have the applicant here to present? Please, would you go ahead and introduce yourselves?
There.
Yes, here. And please take the microphone and please introduce yourselves.
There?
Yes, there. Yes, at the podium. Sorry about that.
I'm Catherine Bury, one of the owners of Three Finns Coffee Roasters.
And Ron Reddick, the other owner, Three Finns Coffee Roasters.
Did you want to mention anything about your project?
Yeah, so we own Three Finns Coffee Roasters in West Dennis. It's a roastery and coffee house. We roast our own coffee for retail and wholesale to other establishments on the Cape and off Cape. But we also have a coffee house combined with our roastery where we serve coffees, teas, espressos, savory and sweet pastries, some cakes, teas, et cetera, merchandise. And that is something that we want to replicate here at this location. We are a community gathering spot where we are very open with allowing people to come in, hang out. We have people who are writing books. We become a community hub for people who are coming in and practicing their Italian lessons. People come to us and hang out before they go someplace or to meet their friends or afterwards. And what we want to do in this establishment here is kind of replicate what we have going on in West Dennis and make this a coffee house and a community gathering space.
Yeah, we've kind of run out of space in our existing area. So we needed additional production space for like cold brew. We're expanding into bean-to-bar chocolate, which we'll also be doing there. So great place to get your candy bars.
So you'll also be doing some light manufacturing. So this is a change of use from a recreation facility. It was formerly the Chatham Beach in tennis. No, it was formerly a health club, Chatham Health Club, and to commercial use as restaurant and light industry and manufacturing.
Correct.
All right. And this is at 251 Kroll Road. And you're going to be operating a 70-seat coffee house. I'm just drawing from the staff report. And then, as you mentioned, you'll be doing production and packaging of chocolate.
Correct.
And cold brew coffee. Okay. And then I'm just going to point out to the board, your staff report is quite complete. There's a bit of history. I don't know that we need to go through all of that. But you have a history of what this property, what's been approved for the property. December 13th, 2021, the most recent, we reviewed a pre-application change of use from a health club to dry storage. And that was a pre-application. The applicant never returned, so that was never done. So I'll just go through our site plan review criteria. I think everything has been satisfied. Let's take a look at the parking. The parking is defined below, let's see, for restaurant, you need a total of 21 spaces. Okay. And how many parking spaces are you providing?
There's actually 25. Some will be for staff parking. And then there was an easement granted, like 10, 12 years ago, for some additional parking. But in reading the easement document, on a change of use, the easement goes away. So we'll have 25 spaces.
Right. But you still have more than you need for this change of use. Okay, great. And I'll just go through on our table. Everything seems to be satisfied. Pedestrian traffic access, off-street parking and loading, general arrangement size design and general site compatibility of buildings, lightings and signs, adequacy of stormwater. We want to look at that. And sewage and, let's see, did you submit?
There was a Title V that the owner had just done that I can provide if needed. But we plan next year to get onto the sewer system.
Okay, let me see. The health department says the existing septic system is adequate for the proposed use. I'm going to ask Art and Bob Dubus if you have comments to make about the stormwater. Yes, Katie?
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify about the parking?
Yes.
It looks like there are 21 spaces required for the restaurant use and then 15 spaces required for the light industry and manufacturing.
In addition.
Right. So that's a total of 36 spaces between the paved and unpaved parking spaces. There are 42 spaces on site. So there are plenty, but I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. My error. I apologize. All right. So back to the stormwater. Any questions, Art? I'll ask you if you have questions about the adequacy of stormwater and drainage.
Well, this site has been before us before. And there's been some concerns and issues associated with runoff from this property to the property immediately to the north of this. It's a smaller site, which is above Kroll Road. And there is a need to pay attention to that section of where the access is and where the grass parking is. Perhaps there needs to be some sort of a berm set up there so that it doesn't run off into the adjacent property and flood it because that has been an ongoing event.
So that's the property, the optometrist on that side?
That's correct. That's correct, yes. So that is, that has been raised by that particular property owner when we dealt with the subdivision just north of you, which is a two-lot subdivision there. We had similar issues and they installed a catch basin on that property. However, there was limited information. So we're not quite sure what it actually was installed. I think the concern that I have on this is this property does date back, but I'm not sure if there's any information on file about what was the basis of the stormwater back then when the submission was made in either of the previous applications. It seems unusual that there's only one catch basin serving that entire site. So I was wondering if there's any information that you have from previous mission or if there's something on file that Katie can help us with.
I had spoken to the owner of the optometrist that owns that property a couple of weeks ago. And he had mentioned that, yeah, there's a couple of catch basin drains right on the back end of his property. And that after they had redone the street drainage right on in front of both properties, that, you know, they hadn't had any more issues. But I can double check with him. If we need to put a little bit of a berm to direct it further down the street, we can do that.
And do you have?
Well, the idea is to actually to retain it on your property, not to direct it onto the roadway because this is supposed to be captured on your site. Now, your grades, the way the grades are shown on the plan, do appear that it does flow to the catch basin. But I do recall when I was out there for the previous application, that it has a tendency to run off where those parking spaces are if the catch basin gets saturated because there's only one on site. So I'm not quite sure that that addresses where all the stormwater is going.
So I'm not sure if there's more records in the files. Katie, do you recall? Do we have more extensive records in the historical file on this property about the drainage?
Not necessarily about the drainage, but that I'm able to look at. Yeah. But it does look like there are two catch basins on the site.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
If there's two catch basins, then what I would recommend and encourage is that at least the building, because again, the building goes way back to the first, very first submission, at least to have any kind of downspouts which are there redirected into a dry well. And at least that would provide some relief for any kind of runoff that comes from the parking lots. And then I would like to make sure that there's an adequate berm along the back of those grass parking spaces, just so it doesn't run off into the adjacent parking lot. Those two things would probably address the majority of everything that happens on that, on that site. Dry wells are pretty easy, pretty easy to do. I just wanted to avoid having it discharge onto the parking lot, and the parking lot receive all the stormwater from the roof. And that goes to catch basin. So it starts one on top of the other. So that's just a recommendation at this point.
Yes, Mr. Dubus.
Art, when you were there, did you look in the catch basin?
Turn on your microphone, please. Yes, thank you.
And when you were there, did you turn, did you happen to look in the catch basin? I forgot to do that to see maybe, it might just need a good cleaning.
I would agree with you, Bob. I did not look at it. I'm about 1,500 miles away right now, so I didn't get a chance to.
Well, I don't know why you didn't fly home and check it out.
If there's two catch basins, I feel a lot more comfortable with it. But, you know, I'm a little bit of a conservative freak here on this. And to put a couple of drywells in, if there's any downspouts that are dumping to the parking lot, that's a pretty simple thing to do. It's not a major cost item. And it helps relieve some of the burden on the stormwater catch basins, which I just want to make sure that that doesn't run off into the adjacent property at all. That's all.
Yeah, we can do that. And we'll check the catch basins too.
Why don't we ask you and we can put that down as.
As a condition.
Keep an eye on if it doesn't, for them berm, it won't take much to berm down the edge around the catch basin to hold the water in there.
And I'll check the catch basins too, pull them open and see if they need.
Can you point out where is the second catch basin, Bob?
Halfway down the hill.
Um.
Right. And actually, maybe, maybe the water is going by that catch basin.
Could be maybe a little bit of a berm to kind of slow it down as it comes in.
Just because that is in the grass area.
Yeah.
So it might be going by it. But we'll keep our eye on it.
Okay. So Art and Bob, I'm just going to ask if you want to add a condition that we have the downspouts to the dry well and that you add the berm. Yes.
Yeah.
And you add the berm along the grass parking spaces.
A small grass berm, a small.
Yeah, a little slow down the water there.
Nothing too extensive. Just keep an eye on it.
And this is along the southern edge, you're saying, the southern edge of the grass parking space?
No, it is.
It's on the east.
On the eastern edge. Okay. Okay, great.
It's towards, towards the eye doctor. The other side, there's no, no problem that we come across.
All right. Art, are you set?
Yes, that, those are the only two things that I noted on this. So other than that, I think that, you know, the site looks pretty good. I think they're adding a ramp in there for handicap access.
For ADA, yes.
ADA, yeah. That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay, good. Great. So we'll add a condition with those two points to address the drainage issues. Warren, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I'm sorry to be a Grinch here.
I'm sorry.
Mostly as regards to the previous application that we had reviewed, I went and spoke to the abutters and was more than once advised that the catch basin, which is on the way in on the north side of the driveway, while quite adequate, or at least marginally adequate for the runoff that is coming down the hill, that there is runoff from the east side of the paved parking area up the hill, which is directed partially down the hill, partially over the berm, and partially, and perhaps mostly, to the northeast side of that paved area where it runs down in the hollow between the abutter and the optometrist office. And I'm not aware that anything has been done previously to direct the flow of water from that upper parking lot away from those areas, which by definition caused it to flow directly off of the property onto the abutters to the north and to the east. So I'm not the civil engineer among us here. But I would ask Bob if there's an easy way.
The only thing we can do is, it's supposed to rain in a few days, is to physically go over and.
Take a look.
And take a peek.
Well, I've done that in the past, the last time we had an application. I did go over and look after the heavy rain that we had recently. And the catch basin that's on the way in, on the right of the driveway as you go in, is really quite adequate to that. It's only a question of what, whether the water is directed there.
Yeah. What we had planned to do is, there's landscaping along here on the peak.
If you could speak on the microphone, maybe point and then speak.
Pointer, pointer. On the backside of the parking spots on the east side, we had planned on updating that landscaping, you know, so we can actually probably make a little bit of a berm as we update that landscaping to kind of direct the water towards the catch basin.
Yeah, I believe the intent is that there be sufficient berm or whatever such that the water is directed to the, would be to the west and then down the driveway to the major catch basin. I'm still unclear where the second catch basin is. But is it up the hill or down the hill?
It's up the hill, right towards the corner.
Can't see.
Yeah, it's kind of far.
Well.
It's right, right here.
I know it's right there. That's the one I know about.
Oh, this is the other one right here.
No.
Yeah, this.
Is that even on the property?
Yes.
Well, but again, the issue that I'm being talked, that I have brought up to me is that the flow is going this way and this way, to a lesser extent, rather than being all directed down this way.
He's telling you to go over to here and then coming down and around.
Yeah, well, it's coming down, down the hill to that side. So, you know, I'm not the one to suggest an answer. But I do know that abutters on three sides have made a point of telling me that there's a problem with the runoff from the parking lot, on the upper parking lot. Not that they couldn't be solved fairly easily, but the water is not directed down to where the catch basins are.
Well, I know a lot of.
So it flows downhill to, to the northeast side of the property and then to the east and onto the optometrist parking area.
We should be able to correct that. A lot of landscaping hasn't been maintained, you know, for the last four years. And I think that may be causing some of the issues. I think once things are cleaned up and mulched and the beds are actually set up properly.
Again, I would refer to my colleague over here to the right with respect to what is or isn't adequate.
We're gonna have to watch it. We could put something in escrow to see, make sure it gets done.
Yeah, okay.
And as for the catch basins, which are down the hill, I've seen them, both when they were very adequate, but also they tend to get clogged. Because everything that runs down, everything that's on that site, and it's quite wooded really up behind the, the building, gets, you know, flushed, if you would, washed down the hill right into the catch basin area. And once it clogs up, then it fills up and then it spills over into the optometrist. So.
We're sharing with leaves and debris.
Yeah, leaves and debris. It's not that it's inadequate.
Every place in Chatham does that.
Yeah, well, but in this case, the consequence is that the optometrist has a pond in his property, which is not the, you know, it's not his problem. He's done a lot, by the way, to try and mitigate all of the issues.
He has a big drainage system in the backyard.
He put in a huge drainage system and raised the level of his parking area about two feet, I think. But that doesn't mean that the water still doesn't come up from, up over the hill and then to the northwest of his property. And then to the extent that the, the catch basin at the bottom of the hill, or the two of them are clogged, then of course, that's a problem. I think the adequate, I think they're, I think they're quite adequate because when they've been cleared out, it drains out quite quickly. But the thing, the water that runs over the hill and to the northeast corner of the parking area never has a chance to get to the catch basins. So I don't know if there's an easy way to fix that or what could be conditioned in this particular case to make sure the water does run towards the catch basins. But as they say, I've been advised by three different abutters that that's an issue. So I bring it up here.
I'd say probably the easiest is a bit of a French drain right along the back of the parking lot and just bring it out towards the catch basin. You know, that way it comes off of there, hits the French drain and just runs over towards the catch basin.
Again, I defer to my colleagues over here who know about these things. I'm really reporting what I've been told.
Surely you can come across some.
Solution.
Some solution. And like I said, we're just.
I think it's a very manageable issue. I'm just hoping that it finally does get managed. That's all.
And I think, you know, we'll be keeping the landscaping clean in the back, on the back hill too. So there'll be less debris running down the hill too.
So I just want to pin it down because we're going to condition that the berm is added and that the downspout and the dry well is added. And you're suggesting a bond. And do you want like a one-year review or one-year inspection? And do we have an amount of a bond to ensure that the drainage is?
I would say a $5,000 bond would be sufficient to do that work.
Okay. So we'll add two conditions, $5,000 bond, and then a year review or inspection to make sure that the drainage is functioning properly. Does that sound good, Katie, too? And Art, is that satisfactory to you as well?
Yes, because I think the applicant has some excellent suggestions on how to deal with it as part of his landscaping. suggestions on how to deal with it as part of his landscaping too, so I think all of those things together are going to benefit.
Okay, okay, yes, Warren.
Any other, may I make some other comments?
Yeah, um, I was just going through our, our site plan criteria sort of systematically.
All right, go ahead.
So if your comments are related to any of those, and then we'll go through, um, you know, the comments from referrals and so on. So, so great, so we've.
Catherine?
Yes, Charlene.
I, I do have a drainage thing. For the life of me.
Yes.
I cannot find the second catch basin.
We had trouble too.
I found the one as you go up the driveway on the right-hand side in the existing grass parking area. Where is the second one?
See, do you see where it says parking setback, right, almost to the road?
Hold on a second, I gotta get to the plan on my teeny tiny thingy here.
It's right in the lower corner.
So it's in the grass area?
It is, yes.
Yes.
There's parking setback.
Yeah.
Right to the, to the right of it, just a little bit.
So is that actually working, or should there be some kind of a, a slue way or, you know, something?
It's, it's, it's like a rain garden, it's like a rain garden a little bit, and the catch basin's in the center of it.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that then, thank you.
It's called a rain garden.
Rain garden?
Yeah.
So Charlene, you're also fine with the two conditions that we'll be adding regarding the drainage?
Yes, very much so.
Okay, great, all right.
Yeah, and, and the grade, Catherine, the grades on that second catch basin are even lower than the one that's out in the pavement area, and that's, that, that should be able to capture anything that goes over the one catch basin.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, all right, the next one is adequacy type and arrangement of trees, shrubs, and other landscaping. Um, do you wanna just tell us a little bit about your landscaping plans? It's not really on the plan.
Right, right now, there's quite a bit of, uh, overgrown shrubs right next to the building and that, that are, uh, causing some rock issues, so those will be coming out with, uh, nicer gravel and, you know, some nicer landscaping around the building. And then we're gonna clear out in the back, uh, heading towards the cemetery in the, on the west side, up in.
Yep.
This area.
Thank you.
All of, uh, is all overgrown and that, we wanna clear that out, you know, just leave the trees and just make it a, a, a much nicer area that we have to just kinda chill out. Right now, it's a tangled mess.
So basically clean it up and mulch it.
There is a tree right in this corner of the building that has gotten huge, that interferes with the driveway going up into our loading dock. That one will probably be removed, or at least trimmed way back, depending on what our landscaper says. But other than that, it's just more cleaning it up and making it look nice. It's just gotten very overgrown. A lot of the shrubbery just needs to be, you know, updated and, and enhanced.
But you're not really planning on new, um, greenery, just sort of addressing the existing?
Exactly, yeah, right now, yeah.
Okay, any, any board members have any questions on that yet, Bob?
Add, I don't believe anybody's touched the landscaping in seven years or so.
Yeah, yeah.
It is, it is pretty wild.
It, it needs some help.
And I would take that tree out, because it's a, uh, that's a hard place to get trucks in and out of, to, for the loading dock.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Um, then the next, uh, point eight doesn't apply, that's about play area for an apartment complex. Um, point nine, criteria nine, protection of adjacent or neighborhood properties against noise, glare, unsightliness, or other objectionable features. I think that's fine, and, um, any questions from the board about these points?
Do we have hours of operation?
Hours that we don't.
We're, we're, our open hours are generally seven to five, um, 363 days of the year. We close Christmas Day and Thanksgiving Day. Uh, our team generally gets in about 6:00 AM to start prepping, and cleanup takes to like six.
No 2:00 AM.
No. And Warren, did you have a question?
Catherine?
Yes, Charlene, go ahead.
It's Charlene, um, I certainly have no qualms or issues with this proposal, but I am curious. Um, I know folks who have lived and worked near other roasting, um, facilities, and at times it can be quite odoriferous.
We, we aren't roasting coffee, yeah, we are roasting coffee, we're roasting cacao beans, which actually you could do in a regular oven. We only go to about 275 degrees, and the only thing you might smell is a little bit of chocolate.
Oh, that would kill me.
I, I, hope, hopefully the neighbors won't object to smelling chocolate. Hopefully it'll make them hungry and come on over. But, uh, yeah, I, I, I know in our coffee roaster over in West Dennis, yeah, you can smell, it's a little bit different, you know, uh, odor. Uh, but the chocolate doesn't have that issue.
So this'll be the chocolate roasting, and in Dennis you do the coffee.
Correct.
Roasting.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions about, yes, Warren?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I was gonna raise the same question about any odors that might be there, pleasant as they might be. Um, but also, is there, um, you're talking about a chocolate activity as well.
Right.
Is that going to have any differences of odors and so on that, that might be certainly?
I mean, you'll smell, you'll smell chocolate.
You'll smell chocolate.
If, if you're actually inside, um, you know, it, there's not that much odor coming off, but like I say, you're only taking the cacao beans to 275 degrees at the darkest of days to go roast.
I appreciate that. With respect to the light manufacturing activity, I am assuming that there is not any particular noise level associated with the equipment. Is that correct?
No, correct.
Um, and in terms of the hours that that will be operating, in other words, that the lights will be on and so on, and maybe deliveries and so on, that would be at the, prior to 6:00 AM?
Correct, no, it, it's the same hour as, as our business hours.
During business hours.
Correct.
All right, um, that was all on that point, thank you.
Okay, any other questions about this point?
Still got one, but you haven't got there yet.
Um, okay, adequacy of fire lanes and other emergency zones, we do have, let's see, we have a response from the fire department. I don't think so. Um, but you, um, any questions from the board about the.
I, I wanna go back.
Emergency access, yes?
I wanna go back one, to the, uh, to the roasting part.
Yes.
Do you, when you roast, do you, do you, uh, have a, a flue or a chimney that, uh, the smell goes up?
There is a flue, yes, yeah, double walled, double walled, eight-inch flue.
Now, you're gonna add this to the building, or is there one there now that you're gonna use?
I might use, there is an existing one for the, um, water, whatever you wanna call them, the furnaces for the, uh, pool heaters. I'll probably just grab that, that flue that goes up.
How far above the roof line do they go?
Goes six feet. It's existing right now.
Yeah, well, that's on top of the hill too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other?
Sorry.
Questions, no, that's all right. And adequacy of fire lanes and other emergency zones, we don't have, um, a response from the fire department, um, but I don't see issues. Do any other questions from board members?
There's only one way up, and the delivery trucks go up in there, so I, I don't, I don't see any.
I think it's adequate.
Any, uh, problem with a fire truck going up there.
All right, any other questions? Um, okay, and then the last one is adequacy of structures, roadways, and landscaping in areas with susceptibility to ponding, flooding, and/or erosion. I think we've kind of covered this already in our discussion of drainage, yes? Okay, great.
I do have.
Yes, Bob?
Uh, is there a, uh, sprinkler system in the building?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Um, and we've reviewed the parking, uh, 21 plus 15, 36 spaces are required. Now, I'm a little confused, uh, Katie, you said there's a total of 42 spaces, is that without the easement? That's omitting the parking on the easement, because there's another total on the report that says it's 49 paved, parking, and 25 unpaved.
Yes, Madam Chair, when we realized that the, um, easement was expunged, then we reduced the number of spaces to the 42 from the 49.
Okay, thank you so much. So at any rate, you do have more than the required parking, and you also proposed a 26-foot wide by 55-foot long loading area. I'll just quickly review the referral responses. Uh, Department of Public Works, uh, has no concerns, provided there's no additional paving or site grading, but, and you're not planning on that. Um, Zoning Board of Appeals, light industry and manufacturing is a use which requires a special permit in the GB3 district, and you are aware that you will need approval from ZBA for that?
Yes, we've already made our application. I think we're on the March, I can't remember which day, uh, meeting.
All right, we have not received yet a comment from Police Department. We're assuming they have no issues. Health Department says existing septic system is adequate for the proposed use. Uh, HBDC approval will be required for exterior changes to the structure and signage, and have you applied to see the Historic Business District?
Not yet, because we're still trying to work out our kind of sign design.
Okay.
For the building and what color, whether it's gonna be black or it's gonna be white, you know, so I think once we have those ducks in a row, uh, we'll.
Okay, great. All right, so yeah, so you, you do need to see ZBA and Historic Business District Commission, and no comment from Airport Commission. Um, so Warren, did you have another point you wanted to bring up?
Um, I just wanted to ask if we had, have received any, um, input from the abutters.
I don't have any on file. Katie's, uh, shaking her head, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, we, um, as staff, has not heard anything from the abutters, at least nobody's alerted to me to anybody, um, coming in to talk about the application.
All right, great, um.
I did have one other, just from my information, there is, um, a downstairs, I'll call it, um, that has in it professional offices, uh, at the moment. Is that going to be used by your operation?
No, that, at some future point, uh, we'll probably lease it out as additional space. We don't know what yet.
Okay.
But we're keeping.
And the main entrance to the coffee shop will then be where? Where the office, where the entrance to the health club was?
That upper level, uh, where the little reception area was for the gym and the pool area, that'll be the main entrance there.
What, what do you do, fill in the pool, or cover it over, or?
Coffee.
We're gonna fill with coffee. Uh, now, we're actually, the floor isn't very level inside the pool, so we're actually gonna float concrete, uh, six inches, uh, base in there to level off the floor, polished concrete, steps going down into the pool, and then nice seating areas down in the pool.
Oh, so you're gonna be having coffee inside the pool?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering whether you get different coffee in the deep end.
You know, we can get dark roast.
There we go, there we go.
Yes, it's stronger than the deep end.
No other questions?
I, I just have one more, and that's that, I, I'm assuming you're gonna generate more waste than the pool did, and I don't see the, the wa, receptacle, trash receptacle.
There is a, a space right by, in the back area by the loading area, is where they had their dumpster before. We actually do not generate much waste. Uh, most of it is recyclable cardboard that we put in the recycling bin. Uh, and our, we get by with a two-yard dumpster per week for our general waste, that's it.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we've.
We use a lot of recyclable, we don't use, we don't sell anything in plastic.
Our milk comes in glass, returnable bottles from a local dairy. So that's a big push of ours to not generate waste.
It's great.
Thank you.
It's great. Um, just to follow up on Warren's question, we could ask the question if we need a site visit or a public hearing, if you're concerned about abutters responses.
I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, okay.
Personally.
Is everyone in agreement, uh, that we do not need a site visit or a public hearing for this matter?
I, I don't.
Are there any abutters, um, participating in this meeting?
No.
Uh, I don't see any. Uh, yes, Katie, yes, sorry.
There will be a zoning board of appeals, public hearing for the, um, for the special permit, so not, uh, abutters will be notified during that process as well.
All right.
The building is set back, the building is set back from the other, the other neighbors, uh, up on the top of the hill a little more.
Yeah, we got Mr. Crowe right down at the base, we got the optometrist, and then we have one up to the north, which I haven't met yet.
So, I mean, the building is away a little bit, and the traffic flow for the health club was a lot more, I don't mean to say you're not gonna have more traffic, but, but I believe the health club had more traffic.
Probably, I mean.
During the course of the day, uh, in very early and late.
Yeah.
Because it was open, uh, early for people.
It was, yeah. Um, but at any rate, uh, Katie reminded us that there will be a public hearing for your ZBA special permit, so a, any issues with the abutters could be addressed at that, through that public hearing. All right, any other questions from the board or comments, um, because then we can move to vote, um, and I will recommend that we move to approve with our three standard conditions and the additional two conditions, one about the berm and the downspout and dry well, second condition about a performance bond, a $5,000 and a one-year review, particularly to review the drainage, that the drainage is adequate. So there'll be five conditions. Uh, do I have a motion to approve with these five conditions as stated?
Madam Chair, Charlene?
Yes, Charlene.
I would move to approve the amended site plan with conditions as outlined by you for the proposal to change the use of the unit from retail to restaurant use based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for the approval pursuant to the protective zoning bylaws with the conditions as we noted.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
This is Warren Chain, I second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll do a roll call vote, Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Bob Dupus.
Bob Dupus, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
And this is Catherine Hopper, and I also approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And of course, we wish you the best of luck with your business.
Thank you.
Sounds like it'll be a good one.
No, no, do we get, uh, two free coffees when we?
Oh dear. Strike that from the record, please. All right, so the next item on our agenda is one 40, is also a site plan review, formal site plan review for an amended site plan for 149 Enterprise Drive, and again, this is a change of use, um, from an auto body shop to an indoor self-storage facility, and if the applicant is present, or an agent of the applicant, could you kindly introduce yourself and present to the board?
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is David Bernie, and I'm representing Montemoy Storage. Um, with me today is our surveyor, Paul Sweetser, and our engineer, Dan Crotto. In case there's any technical questions, I'll pull them up. Uh, we've been approved by the HBDC for both demo and the new building. Uh, today, we're seeking your approval for a new climate-controlled storage building. It's a standard, typical metal building, and it is perfect. And, uh, there'll be a main front door, and then you access to individual units once you're inside. We meet the minimum lot size, we meet the setbacks, the lock coverage, the parking, green space, drainage. The, one of the sticking points that we're having, though, is the offload zone, and if you, if you could go to the proposed plan. So, on the right side of the building is our offloading zone, which is 18 by 25. Your requirements are 12 by 35. We don't have the space unless we were to steal it from green space, or parking, or setbacks, which we know we can't do. Um, but there's a few factors that lead us to believe that it's sufficient the way it is. Um, I called U-Haul, and the two most common vehicles that they rent are a 19-foot truck and a 22-foot truck, so both would fit in that space. Um, we have the cul-de-sac, as you can see at the bottom there, we're on the cul-de-sac, so if somebody were to come and needed to change direction, they could just go through the cul-de-sac, and there wouldn't be, there's no fear of backing off the road. Also, with the cul-de-sac, there's less traffic in general, and it's slower. Um, also, factoring in the national average for these types of buildings, we expect one to two cars a day. Um, so with a very light traffic from us, there's very light traffic from the, for the general roadway. Now, with that said, you could get a moving company that brings in a big giant moving truck, we, we understand that. At that point, you're into a CDL professional driver, and I would think he could navigate without hitting the building or something else. Um.
Could I just?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to interject. I just wanted to interject. Katie and I discussed this this afternoon, and.
Okay.
Another option that the board could consider, you require eight parking spaces. The board can vote to waive one of the required parking spaces if the board so chooses, and that would give you some additional space to increase the size of your loading area.
Okay.
So that's a possible action of the board. Yeah, Bob?
Chairman, I would, I would rather leave the loading zone as is. Sorry, thank you. I would, I would rather leave the loading zone as it is, and if they had a big truck that came in there, I'm sure that they could borrow one space to unload the truck and then every.
They could borrow it, yes.
I, I personally don't think there's any problem. Most, how big are the storage units?
They're various sizes, so the smallest is a five by five, and the biggest is a 10 by 20.
Yes, you're not, most of the materials that come in there are gonna be on smaller truck vehicles.
Yeah, even for a 10 by 20, it's not.
Where it's located, they haul boats through the, through that area, and, and they have no trouble going around into their place. So I would rather see the extra parking place, and if they knew the truck was coming, they could block it off and, and use that space if they needed it.
Katie, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so the board has the authority to waive a parking space, but they don't have, you don't have the authority to reduce the size of the off, of the off-street loading space. So my, that's why that we are making the suggestion.
Well, then why don't we, why don't we use that as a loading space with lined out with a parking space on it, so it'll cover the base?
That would be fine as well, as long as the boat, the board would just have to vote to.
So we would waive the parking space, yeah.
Right.
It's just that that's the action we have to take.
That's fine.
Yeah, we can't, because otherwise we're approving something that's not approved in the bylaw, and there's no action that we can take to waive that.
I'm all for the bylaw, believe me.
I know. Okay, good. All right. So please, continue. Did you have more that you wanted to explain to the board? Please go ahead.
No, so just to clarify, so you're saying increase the loading zone to encompass space eight?
Yes.
And that, but it would just be signed for both, signage for both and striped for both? Okay, that's easy.
Well, technically, the board will be waiving a parking space, so that your loading zone will meet the space requirements that the bylaw says.
And, and if you needed it, you could use that little space for a parking area.
I see. Perfect.
Right, okay.
That was it. I open to questions.
All right. We could go through our site plan criteria again, but I don't see, the staff report has, has checked them all as satisfied, so maybe let's just go to questions from the board.
Your downspouts will be in the, in the ground.
Yes, so if you go to the drainage plan, yeah, so it picks them all up. You can see that, actually, I should use the pointer. So there's, there are every 40 feet in the back of the, around the, the two sides of the building, and you see he's got drainage coming this way, and then this one goes the other way. But yeah, they'll all be in the ground. I think, I believe it's eight-inch, yeah, eight-inch drain pipe. So it's pretty sufficient to the six catch basins.
To be more than enough, they're solid sand in there.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna have a sign out front or a sign on the building?
The sign will be on the building, so we did not, that was part, was not part of our approval at HBDC. We haven't had the chance to get the sign designed, so that's gonna happen, and then we gotta go back to them.
In a dumpster spot?
There won't be a dumpster.
No dumpster?
No.
I'll quickly go through the referral responses, just for the benefit of the board and everyone. Department of Public Works, no concerns. Zoning Board of Appeals, no review or approval is required. Police Department, no comment. Health Department, proposed building will not have any water or sewage facilities. The existing septic system must be abandoned, as the new building will encroach on it. And as you mentioned, you did see HBDC on January 17th, but you need to go back for the approval of the signage. No comment from Airport Commission. Other questions or comments from the board? Art or Charlene, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I, I have a few questions.
All right, go ahead, Art.
I think the finished floor grade is about 35 or something like that, based on the site grades. Is that about right on the inside?
The, out front?
No, inside, the finished floor grade of your building.
Oh, finished floor grade, yes.
Okay, so, and, and how tall is the building about?
It's 12 foot at the, at the highest, and 10 foot four at the front edge and the back edge.
Okay, so I'm a little bit confused, because what I'm seeing here, and if you go a couple of plans before where it shows the contours, it shows, yeah, that's it. It shows grades in the back of about fif, elevation 52. So that's about 17 feet above the finished floor grade. So your building is, you know, I don't, I don't know how you're dealing with that rear edge of the whole building there, because there's a significant slope that has to be addressed.
Correct, so I should have brought this up at the beginning. So we have planned to cut that hill and slope it back, and we've had a couple different excavators out there, and we've kind of been going over this. If we run into an issue where we needed a wall, we think we can do it on the slope. But if we needed a wall, we would come back and, and ask for your approval. We need to get into it a little bit, because the contours are, are all, it's very irregular back there, so till we get into it, there's, there is a little bit of gray area. If we get stuck, we'll come back and get an approval to put in a retaining wall.
Yeah, I, that would, that's really my main, main concern and question. You only have about five feet there, so I don't know how you're gonna be able to cut that back, and, without going and encroaching on the abutting property, unless you have, have you talked with the abutter and whether you can actually regrade on outside of your property with an easement?
I have. I talked to the abutter, and they said if we needed to, that we could, we could slope onto the property a little bit, so.
Okay. Yeah, so I, what I would like to see then is, if you are able to do that, I'd like to see, you know, an ASB plan that show what that is.
Sure.
So have that on file when, when you get done with that. If you do have to come back and you need, for example, a, a modest retaining wall, I'm sure that'd be straightforward. We just need information for the file associated with that, but it wouldn't surprise me a bit if you had to come back for something.
Okay, yeah.
The other, the other thing I saw in the documents, there was a note that said you're providing fire sprinkler system. Is that gonna be connected into the fire line? I mean, the, the water line out in front of the property?
That's correct, it'll go into the street.
Okay, so I, I would just like, you know, again, an ASB showing what's the size of that line and location of where it's going to be, and if you have an underground, power line or communication like that, just, I'd like an ASB on where all of that's gonna be. And I know that there's a lot of flexibility for access for your particular site in here, so it's a matter of nailing it down once you get, get to that.
So.
I did, I didn't have any other questions other than that.
Okay, just a note, right at the front door is the underground utilities for the electric. The water is being designed right now, so I don't have that on this plan, but it's down in this area, I believe, but I'm not 100%. Bob, you might know better than us.
That's what I, I mean, is on, down on that end.
Is the, okay, so, but yeah, we can certainly get an ASB for that.
So Art, I just wanna, will an ASB, will you be satisfied with an ASB vis-à-vis the retaining wall and also the location of the water lines? Or do you want to add a condition?
No, I think if he has to come back with a retaining wall, if it's something other than a few feet, then I think he has to provide us with information, because it could require a more detailed design and, and that, and I think that's something that we, especially since it impacts the adjacent property. And I, I don't want the adjacent property to be impacted if the retaining wall is not doing its job right. That, that's all. So I think he needs to come back for us. It could be limited to just that issue. I'm sure it's gonna be pretty, pretty much straightforward, whoever you're, you're gonna get on board to do that. And then it, it's, it's a matter of having that for file.
Okay, great. So you're all right with?
Yeah, and.
Without a condition to address that issue?
Right. And the stormwater was more than adequate that they addressed on there. I do like to see a, a good stormwater design. It has excellent calculations submitted for, for support of that, so thank you very much.
Great, okay. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I want to know why you didn't put a Johnny in there for somebody to maintain themselves.
It's not required.
I, I, I didn't, I'm just, I'm asking the question, I didn't say it was required. I just wondered why you didn't put a one, like, a washboard.
Cost, because you, then you're into a septic system. So we felt it wasn't needed.
Okay, and then call a John?
We're good.
No, I'm just, I mean, the people, the people are gonna be walking in and out of there, and I, I understand it's a, they'll go in, unload, do their thing, or store what they want, and then if they want something, they'll come back and go in and come out, so.
So we looked at a bunch of facilities, some online, and then we went and visited some, and most of the time, there's no bathroom. On the, these, most of them are the exterior roll-up doors, and there's nothing. And then the industry is going to this climate-controlled model, and in most of them, there are not bathrooms, and a lot of them do not have an employee or staff or anything.
So no, nobody's gonna be, nobody's checking in on them, so it's, you rent the place, you get a key, and off you go.
Yeah, it's all keypad, so you'll have access at the front door, and then you go in and have access with a keypad at your unit. This camera is everywhere, and it's monitored.
No, I, I, I believe in the indoor, because of, especially around here with the, with the fog and the humidity that we have, that the.
Correct.
Outdoor, outdoor facilities are not quite user-friendly all the time.
Yeah, humidity kills them, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's Charlene.
Hi, Charlene.
So I did have the same question that Art raised at the rear of the building, so I'm, I'm satisfied with that discussion. I just had a question, though, oh, one thing. So space number eight is actually the handicap accessible spot?
Oh, so we'll have to switch that, yeah.
So that needs to be moved somewhere, somewhere else, and, you know, just modify that to, to accommodate, you know, the loading zone and a proper ADA compliant space. The other thing I had, and, and I meant to look this up and shame on me, do we allow backing out onto the road for parking?
It's not a state highway.
That's not really my question. What does our bylaw say to backing out?
Onto Enterprise Drive.
I, I'm gonna say that it probably says you're not supposed to do it on a busy road like Queen Anne, but I'm gonna tell you that 990% of the time, you see people back out on our roads wherever they are.
Bobby, I don't disagree with you, but if, if we're gonna be, you know, vigilant to the requirements of parking and such, I honestly don't have a problem, because the traffic on this road is pretty minimal, but I'm still concerned that are we approving, potentially approving something where it's, it's not allowable? And if, or can we waive it?
Well, the, the previous building and the building across, and the building across the street all back out.
Yeah.
So I, I'm inclined to, to let it go, only because of the, the consistency of the people backing out there.
And the people could also back in. I, I mean, it's not necess, they won't necessarily be backing out, it's just that you're saying there's not a lot of space, not sufficient space to turn around between the parking spaces and Enterprise Drive, correct? But the people could back in to the parking spaces, so it's.
But I'm just, I don't know, if anybody there has a zoning bylaw handy?
Probably Katie, yeah. Katie, go ahead.
I do, it talks about, thank you, Madam Chair, it talks, the dimensions talk about each parking space shall consist of a stabilized surface measuring a minimum of nine feet in width and 18 feet in length, plus adequate maneuvering area and aisles. It does not specify how big those, the aisle width has to be or anything along those lines, so that's straight out of the bylaw.
It just says adequate maneuvering area. So.
Catherine?
Yes, Art?
In, in this particular case, in this location, I think I have a tendency to agree with Ms. Duppus. I, I think that this is going to be sufficient for circulation, again, because of its location and its use and everything else. And there's no.
And I have no.
Room to expand of, of anything on, on this development at all.
And I honestly have no problem with it, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to be approving something that's not allowable.
Agreed.
As long as we feel the maneuvering space is adequate, I think we'll be upholding the bylaw. And I would agree with Art and Charlene that the maneuvering space in this area is adequate. It doesn't, and it also does not necessarily mean that the people are backing out, they could back into the space, which is more usual for a storage area, yeah.
We, we could ask them to put a few signs up, be careful of backing out, you know.
That's reasonable, sure.
Just so somebody's conscious of it. But yeah, some, well, I don't know, the trucks probably will be backing in.
I think the trucks will back in, yeah.
And the cars will drive.
Yeah.
That's my guess.
Yeah, but if you're driving a, a truck full of stuff, you're usually backing in to the space at a storage facility, because you, you want to have the minimum distance for unloading.
Yeah, I would say.
Madam Chairman, I would also add, if they are accurate, in one or two cars a day.
Yeah.
Going there, two cars a day backing into the street, doesn't give me a lot of angst.
No, considering the previous one had cars backing in all the time, because they were a sticker station, so their, their traffic flow was heavy.
Correct.
Yes, please go ahead and please introduce yourself.
Paul Sweetser. I just want to point out that with the, with the spaces, they're 18 feet in length, then when you take a measurement from the back of the space going out to the pavement, you have approximately another 18 to 20 feet.
Yeah.
So it, it seems like it would be adequate for backing out and maneuvering.
Okay, great, thank you. Other, other comments and questions from the board? Yes, Warren, please go ahead.
From the plan, the paved area in front of the building appears to go from the building all the way really out to the street. Is that correct?
There's a little gap right at the front of the, very close, there's, I believe it's 18 inches. And then from there, yes, to the street is pavement.
So in backing out or going straight out from those parking spaces, would you be able to go directly to the street over that 18 inches, whatever it may be? Or do you have to have an ingress and, and an exit?
No, I'm sorry, I maybe I didn't, the 18 inches is right against the front of the building.
Ah, I'm sorry.
From the air to the street.
So then it's where the paving begins, goes right out to the street.
Correct.
And there's no berm or curb or, so no entrance and exit involved. I just wanted to clarify that. And again, I'm not the expert here, but the drainage plan, I assume, does in, presume anyway, that the grading of that paved area will take rainwater and direct it towards the catch basins as opposed to out into the street.
Correct, and if you, the catch basins are right at the edge.
Correct.
So, but yeah, absolutely.
But there's, but there's no berm, there's no anything there, it's just the grading of the paving.
There's a little bit of the flare on the side of the road that's been there forever, but that's how they've been using it, that, there's that flare, you drive over that little bit.
So when you enter your space, you would just go straight in and straight out.
Correct.
You wouldn't have to, to in fact, look for an exit, so to speak. I just.
Yeah.
That's what it looked like on the map, I just wanted to make sure that I clarified it, thank you.
Sure.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments from the board, I would. I would recommend that the board approve the amended site plan with our standard three conditions. And also that we have to note that the board agrees to waive one of the parking spaces, so that seven will be required. And the ADA-approved handicap space needs to be relocated. And can we add that as a condition, or?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I would also request that that is shown on the as-built plan.
Yes, okay. And we can add that as a fourth condition. All right. So may I have a motion to approve the amended site plan as presented with the four conditions as stated?
Madam Chair, Charlene, I so moved.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you.
Way too quick, Charlene.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Worchhefter?
Bob Worchhefter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
And this is Catherine Help, and I also approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dubus.
They're going to the HPDC?
They have to go back for their, but they
The HPDC?
Yeah.
What about, what's the other one you're going to?
That's it.
That's it? So you're all set?
Yes, sir.
Good luck.
But don't you need your signage approved by HPDC, so you have to go back?
That's, that's minor.
Yeah, I do need to go back for the signage, that's correct.
That's okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Next on our agendas are long-range planning discussions. I'm going to reverse the order as listed on the agenda, and Katie Donovan will give us a brief update on the progress of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning initiative.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. We had a conversation, we've had a couple of meetings with the Cape Cod Commission, most recent was today. In our conversation, I think I had mentioned to you at the last meeting, that I was requesting that they move up what their proposed timeline was. They had offered today that they would have something to bring to the board for the second meeting in February to be reviewed for the special permit criteria. And also would like to report that the, I was happy to see that the DTLTA grants have been announced, and so we will be applying for the DTLTA grant for the build-out analysis. Also had that discussion with the Cape Cod Commission staff today as well, so. So we are still moving ahead. Everything's moving in the direction that we had discussed at the last meeting. And the Cape Cod Commission staff had indicated to me today that they intended to be here on the, I think it's February 26th, for discussion with the board.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great. Any questions from the board members? Thank you so much. So the other item on our long-range planning agenda is the massing and scale of residential structures. As, as you remember, back in 2019, the board put a lot of work into this. This item, just as a point of history, has been on the planning board's to-do list ever since I've been on the board. And in 2019, in early 2019, we did get the memo from Select Board asking us to move it forward as a priority. During 2019, a lot of, we put a lot of work into it, especially Bob Worchhefter and Ali Sabatino, who was our planner at that time, put in a lot of work to analyze the data on Chatham residential properties. Then we had to hold off, largely due to COVID, we had to hold off on continuing on that project. But basically, the analysis of the data on Chatham residential properties was completed, so it was a good leaving-off place. And so I was thinking what might be good is to do tonight, and you've all received it in your packet, is review of the summary of the data about the residential structures in Chatham. And Bob Worchhefter has kindly agreed to review it with us. And I think you have a PowerPoint presentation too, is that right?
I, I went through the, it's been, it's been four years since I looked at any of this, so I, I did get a little bit of opportunity today to, to go through it and try to make it a little easier for you, rather than go through all those tables. So, go ahead, Katie. One, one at a time. Go back one. You skipped one, yeah. So the question, the first question is what is too large by Chatham standards? You mentioned that this was a Board of Selectmen, and you can see it's a Board of Selectmen, that's how old this is.
Right.
But in 2017, Truro passed a bylaw, and they had a, a limit of 3,600 square feet for a three-acre lot. And you could go up to 4,600 square feet with special permit. But Chatham doesn't have that size lots, as you're going to see. And so the real question is what is it that we're trying to limit? Is, is the issue the size of the building? Is it the lot coverage, or is it both? And I, we, we really haven't resolved exactly what we mean by too large, so just keep that in mind. So, go to the next slide. So the question was what are the sizes of the homes in Chatham? And you can see that we have houses of all different sizes. The, the thing that probably gets people scared is the chart on the right that shows how much bigger the houses have become over the last 10 years. We're now almost 3,300 square feet average size for the, for houses that are being built. And that's, given that Truro has 3,600, 3,600 as a limit, and that, that's on three acres, we actually are building houses that are as big as the ones that are limited in, in Truro. So it is, it is something that we do need to look at, and we do have a number of very large houses. And, and quite a number in the 3,000 to 4,000 range. So, next slide. And the other part of, of the difference particularly with Truro is that we have very small lot sizes. We, we have less than 3% of our houses are, are one and a half acres or more. So all, all of the area that we're talking about are, are properties that are much smaller. And we're putting that same size home on, on very, on, on much smaller properties. In fact, you know, we have lots that are less than a quarter acre, and that's 25% of the homes in, in Chatham. And half of the, half of the, more than half the homes are on less than a half an acre. We did it in terms of non-compliance. I don't, I didn't have the actual non-compliance values at the time that was going to be generated. So we ran something that basically compared the, the lot size, the house size to the, to the lot size, then the, and tried to figure out if it was zoning, compliance or not. And it really depended on whether the garage, whether we could identify a garage or not. So you'll see some of these are non-compliant if you include, if you include a garage, or non-compliant if there really is no, no garage there. So in this case, with the garages, they're, they're about 20, under the, this way of calculating, we had about 2,600 non-compliant from, from a building size comp, component. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of them that are, that just the property is non-compliant because it isn't big enough in the zone. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about the non-compliant from a coverage standpoint. And I also don't know what, all these areas that we have here in terms of size are net square footage, and I never did get a definition as to what exactly net square footage is. So we, if you know what that is, Katie, you can help me out, but we didn't know at the time. Okay, the next slide is more of the non-compliance, and you can see where it is. It's pretty much all over, but there's big pockets of it, some of which are because the, the lots are too small, and others because the acreage does not meet the zoning minimums. Okay, so in this case, where you don't count the garage, you, we actually have more, almost, almost 4,000, 4,000 or two-thirds of the houses don't, are non-compliant. Okay. I think, I think I have a few maps too to go, if you go to the next slide. This is These are, this is an interesting one in that most of the properties in Let's see, rehab it. Most of the properties in Chatham have pulled a permit in the last 30 years. There's virtually 2% or 3% of the homes that have not pulled a permit that are older than 30 years. So everybody is, is rehabbing their houses, and we need to do a little bit more analysis about that as well because the houses are not, it's not just the new houses that are, are being built, but it's, it's people who are adding to their existing homes. Okay, next slide. This is the houses that are over 5,000 square feet. That's where they exist. As you expect, most of them are on the, on the water. Next. I think that's it. That's pretty much what I had. So we, we, we basically have a lot of, of houses that are closer to that 36,000 square feet or above. We're certainly trending towards building houses that are at least that big, on much smaller properties than, than Truro. So it, it tends to, we're, if we're worried about density, it clearly is a bigger issue here. And we're, we're dealing, we're doing all this on, on non-conforming lots. And everybody is built, you know, and we can go through it and try and figure out what's too big from a house, average house size, or what's too big for a lot to house size. We need to come up with a formula that, that works for us, that will be very different from one that's been done before in terms of what's too big. So that's pretty much the data we have.
Can I ask you a question, Bob?
Yeah.
I'm still a little, and also there, there was a lot of additional information that was included in our packet. And I'm just, and maybe we don't have a answer to this yet, but I'd just like to know to kind of just pinpoint the total number. So are we saying there's 600, 6,305 residential properties in Chatham as of the date that you did your review in 2019? And of those, can we nail down the number that are non-conforming in any way, in all ways? So that we have a clear understanding of just what percentage of that will need to go through the special permit process with zoning board of appeals?
Okay, there's two, two issues. One is this, this excludes any, any multifamily property. And it, and that forced me to also exclude any property that had two buildings on, on it. So if you have a carriage house on, on the same property, it, we, we, in this pass, we did not include it. So there are, there are more homes than 6,300.
Okay.
We, and the second part of it is we were going to do a more thorough non-compliance mapping of the whole town, but that was the next thing we were going to do when this all got tabled.
Yeah.
So we, we can pick that up, and we can update all this. It shouldn't take very long to, to update this information. But, but the, that is stuff that would be helpful to, to know. And, and to include the single-family homes with a, a, a second building on them that are not really multifamily. And, and, and I address, address all single-family homes as one, as one analysis.
Okay, great. Because I, as I recall, when we left off, what we were thinking was that we needed to do sort of two prongs of, in our approach. One that addresses the special permit granting criteria, since, since very likely the majority of the properties are non-conforming. And then one that just deals specifically with building square footage in relation to lot size for those smaller, what we predict is a smaller percentage of the residential properties that are not non-conforming. So, so that's, anyway, that was my question. But yes, if, would you be available to keep, to update the information as you've outlined?
Yeah, I think I can find some time if Chrissy's got time, and Katie can allow access to.
So Chrissy actually no longer, she, she works for the town, but she works out of the Department of Public Works. But we can certainly have a conversation with her supervisor, and I don't think that that would be a problem.
Okay.
You have a, you have a question, Warren, or a comment, or?
No.
Yes?
Well, I went through my notes from those
Okay.
many years ago.
You still have?
Agree with everything that has been said, but I think there are a few things that emerged to expand on our to-do list, I think, from what we had initially been tasked with. First, a comment about the size. While the size of houses has grown significantly, my understanding is that the square footage of a house still does not include the ground floor, underground space. But the majority of the big houses that I see built are all built such that they could be, and are, built with living space potential for underground. They have all of the means of egress, they have windows, and they're just unfinished. But they add essentially one extra floor of living space that isn't counted in those numbers. So if the typical house is two stories, that's being presented as being very, the larger, it's growing significantly. It's actually 50% larger than the numbers even show, so. The, to me, it's, it just makes it more interesting and essential that we address this issue. Also, we have, we included, or were told to include, as I recall, an objective to try and maintain the existing housing stock and try and minimize the bulldozing to build mega mansions. And we had looked at any number of ways to go about doing that without concluding the best. But they generally focused around, gee, whatever we conclude you could do if you bulldoze your house under the metrics and so on, the rules that we decide, we will allow you to do something larger than that if you work with the house that is there. So if the exist, you could add X percent, 10 or 20% to the living space of what's there if you agree to keep what's there. We never had a number or even the exact metric, but the idea was if you keep it, then you can, you can have a bigger house than you would otherwise have if you bulldozed it and built something. That general idea seems to have made it through my notes, anyway. The, we had thought too, the way Truro did, to consider whether it made sense to have two different areas, a coastal area along the water, waterfront, and then inland, as to whether it made sense to have slightly different rules for those two places. Turned out that's what Truro concluded. Their biggest houses were the ones that were along the water, so that they set up different rules for, for those houses than the houses that were inland. So we made note of that without concluding, but it seems to me we should, we should consider that.
Yeah, we should consider it. Add no conclusion, I think that's right.
The, the matrix for providing guidance to ZBA for granting of special permits upon applicants requesting to bulldoze a house or build a new house, we're clearly right on our agenda, and we didn't
we're clearly right on our agenda and we didn't make a whole lot of progress with that. In terms of my notes, if we did, I'd like to have them reviewed so I can include things. The, the, the preponderance, I think, of the opinions that I scribbled down as to how to limit the size of a house seemed to go along with the general approach that was done in Truro to take the median, the average, I think, size of a house in either one or two zones in town and say, okay, you can build a house no bigger than X percent of that. And that was, in the case of Truro, I believe, it was 125%, which was a big increase in the size of a house, but it turned out to be a lot smaller than some of the houses that were being built. But that approach had some, had some merit with the board, as I recall. We, if you, the idea of frontage was also on our list. Regardless of the size, depending on how a building or house is situated on a lot, it definitely is affected by the amount of frontage that a house has and the nature of a lot. We have hog-shaped lots and so on. And there was a question of even a modest sized house that is situated on a lot such that the frontage is significant. In other words, it's mostly house on the street. That was an issue for us and we were, we were going to think about whether there were limits on how much frontage you, you could have. And we hadn't concluded anything on that either. Now, those are my notes that were in addition to, and in no way contradictory to anything that came up with the data that we had.
Great, thank you.
I do recall that we were throwing around loosely that, you know, 70% of all of the houses in Chatham are on nonconforming properties. So, whether that's 60 or 80, it almost doesn't matter to me. You know, the issue is still the same.
Yeah, yeah, I, as I recall, I don't think we made any decisions on any particular point. Just that, as I mentioned, that we need to take a two-pronged approach. One to deal with the non, pre-existing nonconforming, which is the majority of residences, and to, and to address special permit granting criteria. And the other is just the straight, you know, for those properties that are compliant, that we look at lot size. We did, I think we did talk about some of these other points, having separate districts and so on. But I don't think we made any decisions on anything. What I'm gonna, yeah.
Anything.
Yeah. What I'll suggest to the board, but let's keep talking for a while, is it'd be great if we can update the information as we've discussed. And then I'll suggest that because, however it turns out, we know that the majority of properties are pre-existing noncompliant, nonconforming, so that we should, I'm going to suggest that we tackle that part first, that we start to look at that first. And we may need to, we may need some advice from town council to start to find the proper legal way to address that. Because I mentioned to Katie this afternoon, and please let me know if you disagree, but I don't know that we want to give guidelines. I think we want to give requirements. And we have to address the proper legal way to draft requirements for the special permit granting process. And so, we may need to check in with town council about that as a first step even. Okay, other comments, other discussions from anyone? Yes, Katie? Art, you have your hand up. Sorry, I can hardly see it here. Please go ahead, Art.
You know, when you're remote, you have to be real patient.
Sorry about that, I can't, I can't see the hands.
No, no, not at all.
Yeah.
I, I, I have to listen, which is good. There's just a couple of things I think some of the board members can help me clarify from when the folks from Truro were here. There was two things that sort of stuck in my head. One was whether the garage was included or not with, where, the way they looked at things and the way they set their criteria. And the second one was, and Bobby, you have to help me with your data. It, I think it had to do with the footprint. Is the footprint the criteria, or is the total square footage the criteria? And I, you know, for example, we were going through this scenario and I think Warren talked on it a little bit, about the lower ground level where it might be a walkout. But I, putting that aside, you could have easily a house with a, a single floor and the upper level built into where the roof rafters are. I mean, that's a very common practice. My, my home is built that way. What is the cri, what is the square footage criteria mean? Are we talking about just the, the main floor footprint? Or is it the entire square footage of the house? And I'll throw in Warren's piece. What happens if you put in a walkout level too?
Well, part of the issue for, is going to be that we don't have data on the basements. So, I mean, that, that we have a, a number that appears in the tax. You know, this is tax data that we're pulling that, that says how big your house is. And generally speaking, the base, I don't believe it includes basements. So, so I don't know how we would know. I, I guess you would know when you wanted to go and build more. And they said, well, guess what? We're going to count your basement and you've already over the limit, kind of. We're going to face that a lot if we, if we don't know what the basement was to begin with, but it does count in the total. It's gonna, it's gonna be a little hard to implement that. Not to say we shouldn't, but I'm just saying that we haven't counted the basements in the taxes, so we're probably not going to count, count it in, in most of the analysis.
Right. Just so you know, I looked up mine and they did count my built-out section in the lower level.
Oh, okay. All right.
So, I, I guess it depends on whether you finish it or not. When it was unfinished, they didn't count anything. But I did a portion of it finished and that they threw into the square footage.
Okay, and then to answer your second question, that's why I said, is it lot coverage or is it building size? Is it that there's too much, is the perimeter of the home covering too much of the, of the land area? Is that too, I mean, I think that's too big. But I also think there's a too big where, you know, the, there's a giant two-story building sitting, sitting there that's 5,000 square feet. So, I, I, I think we have to discuss it both ways and decide what we really think is too big.
Or maybe just address both of them. Yeah, in whatever we do, address both lot coverage and building square footage.
And, and my recollection of the Truro discussion was that they began by looking at square footage. Is any house too big? And there was one prime example up on the hill, which was gigantic. So, it was how big is the living space? I think, if memory serves, that when they got down to the final criteria, that it was footprint. It was lot coverage, which is the way they restricted it. And it was to 125% of the median in, in, in the, most of the town. And then I forget if it was more than that or less than that on the shore area that they handled separately. But they, they basically were wrestling with both, square footage as well as coverage. And the coverage seemed to be where they had the greatest success in being able to draft and sell to the, to sell to the, to the voters.
Okay, other comments from the board? Katie, yes, Charlene has her hand up. Sorry.
I, I just want to thank Bob for putting this together. I realize it's a little bit older information, but I think it, it's extremely helpful. In most communities, the net area that's shown on the field card from the assessors is any, any habitable space. Some towns do it a little differently, but generally it's the habitable space. So, like Art said, you know, before a portion of his basement was finished, it wasn't counted because it wasn't determined or counted as habitable space. Doesn't mean it's a bedroom, we don't want to get into that. But it's a space that you can, you can utilize and has heat usually and, and so on and so forth. I think there are a couple of things that, that need to be looked at, not just the square footage and the lot coverage, but also massing. So, there's two different things to be looking at here. And it doesn't mean they can't coexist. But it, I think that's a direction we need to look. I'll be very curious when the information is updated because I think particularly during COVID, we saw a lot of new construction, we saw a lot of reconstruction, we saw a lot of additions being put on to a number of homes. So, that information, I think, will be very helpful. One other thing I want to point out is, back in 1987, the town did a complete rewrite and rezone of the entire town. Areas like where I live, which is basically across the street from River Bay, and River Bay went from 20,000 square foot zoning to 60,000 square foot zoning. Well, there was very little land yet left to be developed, but it threw all these properties into being nonconforming. So, part of the, I think the exercise may be, what was previous zoning? How was it created in the first place? And, you know, is it, is that something that may need to be looked at? Just because it's R60 zoning, you know, there, there is no property in the R60 zone, at least in and around my neighborhood or River Bay that I'm aware of, that even is remotely close to being that large a lot, which is not that large. It's only a zoning acre and a half. So, I think, you know, those are some, some possible things to, to look at. And on that note, I'm having wicked back spasms right now. I'm actually going to be signing off because I, I can't sit any longer.
I, I was going to ask you what you meant by massing, if you have one minute.
I definitely do have. So, massing goes to, because I was in Truro as the town planner there for nine years and tackled a lot of what was finally brought up for their bylaw. Things that I had thought of were thrown away, then brought back, and thrown away and brought back. But massing is the size of the structure, so the cubic square footage of the structure in relation to the total lot area. And that also does include frontage. One of the exercises that was looked at, and this was for the entire town, not just for the seashore district when I was there. So, one of the things that was looked at is looking at your adjoining, adjacent of Butters. And how big are those houses would, would help to determine or forecast how big your house could end up being. There was a formula, and I forget what it is at this point, that we had looked at. So, massing is just looking at more, not just the, the linear square footage, but the cubic square footage, including height and bulk.
Okay, I can, I think we can handle that.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you, Charlene. I'm so sorry that you're not feeling well, but thank you so much. This has been really excellent, excellent points.
By the way, great work on that, Bob. I'm, I'm very impressed.
Yes, it's impressive.
All right, I'll.
Thank you, Charlene. Other points from the board? Okay, so, the way I'm seeing it, our steps of action immediately are first, update the information. And maybe next step to, can we talk to town council? And, and ask about the proper way to address the special permit granting criteria in this case?
Absolutely.
Okay. Other points of action from board members? Those two might be good to start with. And then there's a lot to consider. Yeah, Bob, go ahead.
I just liked Charlene's point about if we revert back to the 20,000 square foot requirements in, in River Bay and other places, what does that, at least in terms of building? You know, maybe it's still zone, I don't care about the zoning, but in terms of the sizing of requirements of houses or something, can we do it on the actual square footage as opposed to the zoning designation? And you, and get around all this compliance? So, I, I would like to see if there, if we are stuck in the zoning requirement as opposed to a physical size, just pass a law that says you can't have more than X, regardless of your zoning. And, and that would, that would get around a lot of the noncompliant lots. I don't know. I'm not a zoning expert. I can do the geog, I can do the geographical analysis, but I, I don't know what, what our restrictions are.
Katie, go ahead.
I mean, I, I think we have to look, again, as Catherine had mentioned, just, you know, talking with town council about the way we would incorporate, you know, some such requirement. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that it wasn't reverting back to the 20,000 square foot zoning, right?
I, I think that might, that, that's certainly a possibility. It might be the hardest one, I don't know. But, but I, like I say, step outside the zoning requirement and use the actual square footage of the property and the housing size as your criteria for how much you could actually increase and have nothing to do with the zoning designation that you're in.
And I, and I think that that was something that may have been discussed previously, if I.
I don't think we ever, we talked about, well, that's what we would try and do, but we never talked about whether it was legal or not, so. You know, talk to, to town council, that should be one of the big questions. It's how far can we go with a formula outside of the zoning requirements?
Right, yeah.
And again, we were going to try and benefit from the experience in Truro because they basically set a size that is the largest you can build. And it clearly passed muster with their town council and with the state of Massachusetts. So, if we could borrow on that, that might be helpful.
Right. Yes, did you have a comment, Katie? Yeah, we just need to be careful. We just need to be careful and I think check with town council what we can do. Yeah, okay, that'd be, that'd be great. Any other comments? If there's no other comments, no comments from the public, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Move to adjourn.
May I have a second to that motion?
I second.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Burchafter?
Bob Burchafter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we adjourn. Let's note the time as 7:15. Thank you, everyone, for participating and please enjoy the rest of the evening.